One second. Okay, Mrs. Bernanke, you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, hang on one second here. Just a reminder that this meeting will be recorded and transcribed.
Okay. You ready?
Ready to go.
We have concluded our business on our executive agenda, so could I have a motion to close the executive meeting and re-enter the public session?
Motion.
Bill, motion from Bill in a second, from Xavier, all in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, that's everybody. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As we are the only ones in the room and in the control booth, we all know the exit and smoke-free restrictions of this meeting. Okay, we'll start with the approvals. It's upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approved the minutes and transcription from the reorganization meeting of the Huntington Union Free School District Board of Education dated July 7, 2020. Have a motion, please. Motion. Linda, in a second. Kelly, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Oh, I should mention that Mr. DeJacomo was unavailable to attend the meeting today, so everyone else is in attendance.
A comment on the transcription. No, it took a little bit longer to get the July 7 meeting transcription up and available, and that's primarily because the way we're doing the meetings now, the transcription really has to be reviewed word for word, so it did take a little bit longer to get to the point where it was ready to go for posting. And thank you to Mrs. Miranda for spending the time to make sure that it was as accurate as accurate can be.
Thank you, Joanne, I will try to speak into the microphone.
Yes, everybody, please speak or articulate very clearly into the microphone.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approved the minutes transcription from the regular business meeting of the Huntington Union Free School District Board of Education dated July 7, 2020. Have a motion, please. Motion. Michelle, and a second from Xavier, any comments, questions? All in favor? That's everybody. We have FYI for the extracurricular quarterly reports from June 30. Any questions? And the treasurer's report. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approved the June 2020 treasurer's report. Do I have a motion? Linda, and a second from Kelly, any comments or questions? All in favor? That's everyone. And the warrants, it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approved the attached warrants, which were certified for payment on July 8, 2020, and July 22, 2020. Have a motion, Bill, in a second. Xavier, any comments, questions, all in favor? That's everybody.
I think Kelly and I can do all the motions in a second, save you all that head turning.
But you need to move the mic a little closer, because I can't.
Kelly and I will do all your motions in seconds, so you don't have to do all that head turning.
That's okay, because, you know, stretching. Okay, that brings us to board member communications and announcements, anybody have anything? Okay, to Jim then, Mr. Plansky.
Well, the primary focus for the past several weeks has been on designing and fine-tuning the district's reopening plan, and again, we're going to get into this to a certain degree on the agenda as part of an item for discussion. The plan has been submitted to both the New York State Department of Health and the State Education Department, so we are ready to go there. There are still numerous questions, I understand that, and just a reminder, and I'll remind again, that there are eight meetings set up, four for parents, elementary and secondary, and four for staff, and if I need to schedule more, I will do that, but, you know, again, I'm trying to keep them at a manageable time of length, because people tend to lose focus after a certain period of time, and I just want to make sure that everybody has a chance to ask or express themselves as they should be. We are also, just a couple of other things on the agenda here that, my agenda in terms of announcements, we are working on our CARES Act application, which should be finalized very shortly. We are hopeful that the state aid that's attached to that arrives in district, available for use as quickly as possible, and we are applying in a manner that would allow us to use it for the expenses related to the COVID-19 situation that we're currently facing. And just a quick shout out and thank you to, I know it's SEPTA this week who are sponsoring those food drives in Jack Abrams parking lot from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. Next week, the PTA Council, Huntington Council of PTAs will be doing the same, and DISPA will be doing it later in August, and ATH and Huntington Booster Club have already done theirs, and it's just, it's been a pleasure to have all five of these groups step up and work to help our community members in need, so thank you to all.
I think we're going to have some students outside of South Town Market at different times this week to collect for the food drives, too. So if you see them, that's another way to support.
In advance, thank you to them.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're moving on to our first public commentary. We have two items for discussion and action tonight. Oh, you did that, okay. Two items, the reopening plan again, and the district calendar. The first public commentary, the first people to speak would be regarding those topics. Please state your affiliation with the district and keep personnel matters and student matters out of your comments. So raise your electronic hand if you would like to speak, and also remember, as Mr. Plansky just mentioned, that you'll have another opportunity to ask questions or hear answers about the reopening plans at the various meetings that have been set up.
Okay, I'm not looking at the Zoom images, I'm looking at the participant list, so you would have to raise your hand electronically for me to see you right now?
Okay, and there's a second public commentary, so if you didn't figure out how to raise your electronic hand, oh, there's one now.
Okay, Mrs. Carrillo. Hold on, I have to unmute my computer here. All right, now you should be able to speak and be heard.
Hi, everyone, my name's Jennifer Carrillo, I have three children in the district. Ronnie is in Finley, Reeks is in Woodhall, and Rosie is at Jefferson Primary. I've kind of been processing everything that you guys have put forth, and again, I very much appreciate all the effort that's gone into the plan. Ma, I'm just wondering how everyone is viewing the amount of screen time that these children are supposed to be on when they're not in school. I have a really big problem with it, it's not healthy for them, it's not, is there another, is there something else, is there another option, is there a way to go at your own pace like we did in the spring? I just can't imagine, first of all, I have a seven-year-old staring at a screen for that long, we talk very much about social and emotional well-being, seven, six hours staring at a screen, there is no social and emotional well-being. And going forward, even for the older grades, I don't think, I don't understand how anybody could have that attention span to learn that way when they're old.
So, Mrs. Carrillo, I'm going to respond, I know you and I had a conversation about this already, and what I don't want to do is speak for the teachers that all three of the children will have, so I think there is going to have to be a degree of communication between students and teacher, and again, you have students at three different ages, as well as you and the teachers, to make sure that the individual needs of each one of the children is met to the greatest extent possible. This is going to be a challenge for everyone, and I know you understand that, but for me to speak to exactly how each class and each teacher may address this in their own way, I can tell you that they are, we have a fabulous staff here, I know that their focal points at the beginning of this year will be that social and emotional piece, and helping to ease these children back into the school setting after a lengthy time of trauma, for lack of a better term, and I also understand they're not going to be in school every day, so there's going to have to be some additional communication and some creativity involved, and like I said, it'll be done in different ways, and I can't speak for every individual teacher and every individual student need, but this was the essence of what we spoke about, and I'll reinforce it here, that there will be some things that have to be addressed once the year begins, and they may not be the same for every child involved.
I can give one quick example of, sometimes this summer, there's been paperwork done on worksheets, there might be on Zoom listening, or the teacher will say, okay, now do problem two, and the students will go aside and work on it themselves, and then raise their hand when they have an answer, or wait for the answer to be given from somebody in the classroom, so that, it's not like they're staring at the screen during that. Just one example.
And I'll mention it again, there are certain specific questions that we may not be able to answer now, and I can address some of the things that we'll talk about shortly when we get to the approval of, or the approval of the process involved with the plan, but there are some, there are some questions out there that are easily answered, there are some questions out there that have partial answers, and there's some questions out there that we can't answer because they go beyond the boundaries of the school district and school districts in general, and I'll speak to some of them shortly.
Is that the only hand we have?
I'm looking for others.
Did you see a hand, Kelly?
No. Okay.
Okay, so that concludes our first public commentary, again, there's a second one later. Moving on to items for discussion and action. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approved the proposed 2020-2021 reopening plan, and authorize the superintendent of schools to amend, modify, and/or update the plan as needed, subject to further board approval in the event of substantial revisions to the plan. I have a motion.
Thank you.
Bill, in a second. From Kelly. Comments, questions, maybe, just to reiterate, we discussed this for three and a half hours already, so it's okay if you don't have any questions, but if you do, I don't know. I want the public to think we didn't ask any questions.
So, I want to thank Jim and the administration for putting together, what is it, Appendix D, the FAQ, frequently asked questions, for someone like myself who doesn't like to read instructions, just go right to the how-to manual, you know, that thing.
A little closer, Bill.
Still, I hear me?
That's better.
The FAQ is very good for people that just want to get specific answers, and so, thank you for making, I know those take a lot of work, my suggestion would be to put that up as its own freestanding link on the website, because I know a lot of people will probably want to just go to that directly, and while it does belong in the end of that document, I think if you leave it at the end, a lot of people might not know to scroll all the way to the end to find those quick answers, so that was my suggestion, is if we could put that up as a standalone link, that way those people that just want to jump to the FAQ can.
Great suggestion.
That's an excellent suggestion, and very easily done. I'll add that, that question, that question and answer document was based on, is based on a number of, actually, the questions that I received, both from staff and from parents and from students for that matter, it's an evolving document, I'm going to update it, we're going to update it as routinely as needed, and there may be pieces of the plan, as I've mentioned earlier, that are amended as well as we move forward based on the circumstances around us. Like I said, I'm going to do the best to make people feel as comfortable as possible, I think the feedback that I received, I appreciate it, and the vast majority really recognize the effort that went into this, to get us to this point, but there is indeed a great deal of anxiety out there, and it's understood, and this is uncharted territory. I was doing some reading myself, and there was something that caught my eye, it's called the VUCA model, and basically, what that, it's an acronym, we're talking about a situation that is volatile in nature, it's an ever-changing process, we don't know what the next day is going to bring, we don't know what the next announcement is going to be, whether it comes from the state or federal level, there is uncertainty involved in a lot of places, there is a complex situation upon us here, this is not a simple, it's not a simple solution, it's not a simple problem, and it's, there's no model involved here, this is the first time that we are dealing with this as a society in general, no less schools. And then there's the ambiguity, there's, there are a lot of things, we get a message one day that's contradicted another day by often the same office that's feeding us guidance and information. I did tune in this morning to the governor's message about schools doing testing. Unfortunately, I'm listening to this, both the Department of Health guidance and the State Education Department guidance suggest away from school districts doing testing, primarily, because for a school to actually engage in that legally, they've got to be a limited service laboratory, we don't have the personnel or the technique on hand to do that, doesn't mean we don't partner with agencies and healthcare providers that do it, but, you know, the messages change every day, and the best thing that we can do now is provide a clear message, one that is consistent, a plan that is readable, and I thank you, Bill, the Q&amp;A document was one step in that direction as well, and it will definitely, it will definitely be posted as a standalone document, and the questions I get will certainly add to that as time goes on, I just don't want to make that an unmanageable document either, it was hard to keep that, type is a little bigger, but it's still 12, 13 pages in length, so, you know, take it slow, those are questions that I have actually been asked, we have actually been asked, so they're tested as, these are questions that are on at least a handful of people's minds.
So we have a motion, in a second. All in favor?
Hi.
That's everybody. That's everyone. So moving on to the district calendar revised. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education adopt the revised calendar for the 2020-2021 school year. I have a motion. Michelle, and a second from Kelly, questions, comments, want to explain?
Just a brief explanation, a couple of minor changes here, not for staff, but minor changes for, actually, a couple of minor changes for everybody, in an effort to make sure that staff has some uninterrupted time, staff members across the board here have uninterrupted time to prepare for what we're going to engage in come return of students, I have it projected on the screen here, initially, we had a conference day set for Thursday and the first day for students on the following Tuesday, September 8. I've had conversations with staff members, multiple units, what we've decided to do is add an additional conference day on September 8, an additional conference day on September 4, that's three workdays consecutively that are available for us to do the preparations that are necessary to lead us to a more comfortable first day for students, which would now be Wednesday, September 9. So it impacts families and students in that school, would start one day later on the Wednesday, it impacts staff, as they now have three consecutive workday conference days on September 3, Thursday, September 4, Friday, and September 8, Tuesday. November 3, which is Election Day, has typically been a conference day, that has been removed, it'll now be an off day for everyone, and I've assured the teachers that we would work to find them some clear and uninterrupted, it may be a half-day that we add elsewhere for conferences to be held as warranted.
I have a question, if you want. There's no need to adjust the date, number of instructional days, you know, as a matter of fact, you'll see the total adjusted, we have to have 180 days, that includes conference days, our total now is 183, it was 183 before, it has shifted from 181 plus 2 to 180 plus 3, there is one extra staff conference day and one student day that converted to a conference day, but under the circumstances, I firmly believe that it is warranted. Anybody else have questions? All right, then, all in favor? That's everybody.
Okay.
And now we are to Ms. McCoy.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approves CSC, CPSC submissions as delineated.
A motion? Linda, and a second from Michelle, all in favor? That's everyone.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approved the district's 2020-2021 comprehensive improvement plan.
Can I have a motion? Bill, in a second.
Michelle. I can just give you a brief synopsis of the plan.
That would be fantastic.
This document and the associated planning document were formulated in response to the middle school's designation as a TSI school, based on subgroup performance. We have five goals in the plan, attendance, revising and just reviewing our attendance procedures, while we know this is not the optimal year to do that, it's something that we had to include in the plan, always looking at instructional best practices, so we'll be providing some additional professional development opportunities for our staff at a later point in the year, to really look at high-level questioning, increased discourse with students, formative assessment practices, et cetera. The third goal is to provide actionable feedback to staff using walkthrough tools, one which we already have and one which we may tweak a bit. Also, number four is improving our, we're just actually reviewing our PBIS practices and enhancing restorative practices with an expansion at Finley and also at STEM and Woodhall. And number five is just continuing to see how we can best engage parents and work with our community, so that's the fifth goal, and that really sums up a tremendous amount of work that I really worked on with Ms. Rothel for much of the spring via Zoom, and also with a team of teachers, administrators, and a parent that supported this process.
Thank you so much, it's a very comprehensive plan.
I do, I do want to thank all who participated in the assembly of the plan, and I want to highlight my frustration with it, and I have shared this with Ms. McCoy on numerous occasions, is the, you know, one of the things we've had a difficult time addressing is the participation rate on these exams, and unfortunately, it happens to be, Finley happens to be the place where more students have refused to take the exams, and that is, that is a right, that is certainly something we're not going to argue with, and we're going to provide a reasonable accommodation for that to happen, and not put students in a position where they're uncomfortable, and that has worked, but for us to have to focus on that right now is unfortunate, and there is a July 31 deadline for submission, they gave us an extension for two weeks, that there are districts across the state that are dealing with this, we have already submitted our participation rate improvement plan, I just think it is a very misguided and misplaced time for school districts to have to be worried about this, we're going to address it from a student need perspective, because that's what we do in Huntington, take care of our kids, but it just, it just doesn't, just doesn't seem right, I'll leave it at that.
I would add, especially in light of that we don't know what will happen with these, what we will have to participate in.
That is also correct.
Can I have a question? What does it mean that all of our schools received an ESA Level 1 for chronic absenteeism?
Basically, that is, there are a number of different criteria that are evaluated when a school district is rated, for lack of a better term, or identified, chronic absenteeism is not something that was used to classify any of our groups in Huntington, but Level 1 means that it is, I have to review it myself, but I think you fall into a certain lower quartile in terms of students with more than 10 days out during a given school year, and that is one of the five premises that Ms. McCoy just mentioned. Thank you. So chronic absenteeism doesn't typically work to, toward identifying a school district, but it can work if it's in a positive area to help a school district avoid identification.
Could you highlight just some of the restorative practices that you're going to be expanding to Finley and STEM?
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
I was asking if you could just highlight some of the restorative practices that you're going to be expanding to Finley and STEM.
Restorative practices?
Restorative practices.
At the middle level, they are doing the restorative circles and looking to expand upon the work that they started last year, and looking to expand that particular part into the STEM and Woodhall buildings, it's a different situation at the high school where they have the connection with the youth court, at the middle level, they're really starting with the restorative circles, and the teachers that participated in the professional development last summer really took it and ran with it under Ms. Rothel's leadership, and they're looking to expand it further. Because of the school closure, it really didn't get to where we wanted it to get, so we'll continue to work on that, and we have professional development that will actually be funded through the SIG funds to support that expansion next year.
Thank you.
Now, I have a question, so that professional development is starting, it looks like early September, right, we'll go through the month of September?
Which professional development?
For staff training for the restorative practice and?
It'll likely start a little closer to October, because we really, the goal right now is for school reopening, we want to make sure that everybody is in and everything is the way that we have anticipated it to be, and then we will start to look for those after-school sessions probably in October.
And understand, professional development is not just an hour after school where we are putting people in a place to listen to someone and then walk away with nothing valuable, so this has to be an ongoing process where teachers are, teachers and staff are in a place themselves to have these conversations without ongoing mediation by an administrator, and attempt to work together in a collaborative fashion to implement some of the strategies that are discussed. With respect to restorative practices, it goes without saying that if kids aren't in school, and if the wrong consequences are issued, and they're not in school because of that, then it's going to take away from their learning, and we're already in a challenging enough situation where we need kids engaged on a daily basis, and our current regional global situation is, as I mentioned, going to make that something that also needs professional development, and that's where the beginning of the year focus is going to lie.
I just wanted to say, the timeline that's included with each of the goals is going to be flexible this year for everything that Mr. Plansky just mentioned, so it may be very specified September, October, but if it gets pushed back a month or two, we did have a conversation with the state department to explain to them that this really, you know, school reopening supersedes everything at this point.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I don't know if the State Education Department agree with that wholeheartedly here, but?
But we expressed our belief in that to them.
I think Kelly has a question.
Does this have anything to do with the attendance awards that were given out last year, I think that was the first year that they were in place, I know the primary schools received certificates at the end of each month for perfect attendance, and then also, we were sent home letters in the intermediate schools as well, if we had more than, like, let's say, I think, five absences, is that related to this?
The, oh, go ahead.
We've been monitoring our attendance for the last, you know, obviously, for many years, however, two years ago, we looked at it district-wide at our administrative meetings to come up with some consistent, or more consistent plans and procedures that all of our administrators agreed upon, so we rolled that out in 2019-20 to try to improve our attendance. improve our attendance district-wide. So some principals may have implemented perfect attendance awards and things like that. It really contradicts what we're going through right now with the pandemic. So having this as a goal at this time was one of the things we had mentioned to the state department, that we don't anticipate an increase this year in our perfect attendance awards.
There will be no perfect attendance awards. There will be no recognition for attendance in general, because we don't want to send the message that coming to school while ill is necessary or even a remotely good idea, remotely, no pun intended. But the idea is attendance in the plan will be measured differently. It will be measured based on online presence slash engagement, as well as presence on the days that you're assigned to be in school. But we need to be very careful that our primary message right now, and I should have mentioned this when we went through the plan, is that if you're questioning whether or not you have a symptom, better safe than, sorry, stay home and engage remotely on that day, and your child will be marked present. That is a critical message. It is something that we need to continue to reinforce. So Kelly, I'm going to say that the perfect attendance award, that's just, a lot of the schools did that already. And I know it's a nice thing to have perfect attendance during a given school year, but there were already concerns that it puts people in a position to send their kids to school on a day when maybe they shouldn't be there. Now it is critical.
Yeah, I had actually, I've heard a lot of not-so-great feedback about that. And so I'm not supporting keeping that going. I think it's a good thing if we take a break from that right now, especially.
Yep.
Anyone else? Okay, then, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
That's everyone.
Thank you, Ms. McCoy.
And we're back to Mr. Polanski.
Okay, I'm asking the board for approval of personnel items on schedules 2, 3, 5, 6, 7, 9, 13, 16, 20, and 22.
Someone have a motion? Bill and a second from Xavier. Questions, comments? All in favor? Kelly? That's everybody. Okay.
I have a few announcements here. We have, we're still hiring, we're actually hiring in a couple of different areas due to retirements and things that we need. As I mentioned to the board, we work very diligently to redeploy staff for the 2021 school year to make sure that everything is in good working order. And we do have an opportunity and a need to replace certain staff members who have, who left us in, at the end of June. So on this agenda, and there's still a lot of work to be done here, we have appointed this evening in the area of special education, Ms. Danielle Frosch, and Spanish at the high school, we welcome Daniela Zalesi. And I would also like to recognize this evening, there are two individuals, and as I mentioned before, there will be a tenure review information shared throughout the summer, more to follow. But there are two individuals who are just appointed to tenured positions in district, and that includes Ashley Harstick, who is the district's data expert. It's an instructional support position. And Donna Morrow, the principal of the Jack Abrams STEM Magnet School. Congratulations to Ashley and to Donna.
Congratulations.
We will celebrate them in the fall, fully in person.
Okay, that brings us to Dr. Eckhart.
Okay, it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve items I through P on this evening's business agenda.
I have a motion from Bill and a second from Xavier. Questions? I have a question that might not, it's sort of related. Do we know anything about driver ed? I know it was announced by-
You know, and I did get an email question on that today, and to the parent involved, I apologize. I was just tied up with so many things, and I usually am right on top of that. The governor did put out an announcement about virtual, virtual instruction. And I spoke with Mrs. McCarthy today, who oversees our driver ed program, and I completely forgot to address this with her, to see if she has any further information. But I will, we will get word out to parents very shortly.
Okay.
It just came out last week.
Anything else?
Yes, recognize two donations today.
Wait, after we, after we go.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. All in favor?
That's true.
That's the part I know. See, I'm experienced at that one. Okay, Xavier, do you have any announcements for us?
I'd like to recognize two donations today. One of them is a two Hiskivanna professional-grade sewing machine and accessories, and two acoustic guitars for Ms. Terry Black. These donations have an approximate value of $17,150. Sounds like the making of a rock band. The guitar, the uniform, you do it all at once. And then the other one is, where is that other one?
The third one, if you want to read up the screen, up here, behind you.
Yeah. Donations for Matthew Minicozy to create an outdoor instructional space in a courtyard at Huntington High School. This donation has an approximate value of $1,050. Thank you to both.
Thank you.
Your role. Thank you, guys. Just, Terry Black has been so generous to the district. So I'd like to recognize, recognize her formally. And Matt Minicozy is, I know it's a scouting family right there, and that outdoor instructional space, as I mentioned to Mr. Palacios earlier, that is going to be his Eagle Scout project. And we love when they do them on a school campus here.
Yeah, makes it double amazing.
So thank you, Matt, and congratulations on the soon-to-be Eagle Scout rank.
And that brings us to our second public commentary. Same rules apply, three minutes. And now you can speak on any subject you'd like, if there is any other subject to speak Just raise your electronic hand. Since you're on an, just says iPhone, please make sure to identify yourself as soon as you come on speaker.
Okay, on the iPhone, you should be-
Okay, try now.
Should be there.
It's Carrie Brandine. How are you?
Hello, Mrs. Brandine.
You keep tricking me, Carrie.
Hello, I know, I'm sorry. I have a quick question. If I want to opt out of busing, is there a way to do that? So that the bus, you know, Gregory's on a minivan. I don't want them to come when he goes to school. Is there a way to opt out?
That's, that's an easy one. What I'll suggest that you do is you can either call Mr. Hender's office in the morning, or you can call my office, whatever's easier. We will, we still have to leave the seat available, but if we know that you're not going to take the bus, we'll take the stop off the route, and we can at least use the space temporarily. It's a difficult situation. I know some districts have tried to gather information on opt-outs and have rerouted accordingly. However, by law, we still have to leave those seats available in case you change your mind. So just knowing that you can do that, even if you don't want to, that seat will still be there. But just give a call tomorrow, and we'll make sure that the route is adjusted accordingly.
Okay, perfect. I just don't want the bus to have to come.
Absolutely understood, and we appreciate that.
Thank you. You're the best.
You're welcome. I think the hands go right to the top, if I'm not mistaken. Okay, we're good.
Okay. So that concludes our second public commentary. Do we have any comments by board members? Anything left to say?
Well, I, we didn't say, I didn't say anything on Wednesday, because we were here for a long time. But I just want to reiterate and thank the administrators, the, all the people who worked on the committee, the teachers, the parents, Beth, Kathy, Jim, and all, the entire community for this plan. It's, I've heard lots of great feedback from people and amazed that you covered every single possible inch of ground in order to get our kids back in school safely. And for people who would like to have their kids at home, stay at home. Personally, I'd like to thank all of you.
Thank you, Michelle. And, you know, I'd love to be able to issue a list of guarantees. I can't do that. And I think just giving, giving parents and families the option to make decisions. I mentioned before, we're moving along a continuum here that's based on safety, flexibility, and making sure that no matter what the circumstances, we can provide our children with a sound education, a high-quality Huntington-quality education. This is not an easy situation for any school district. And there are going to be things that emerge as concerns. And the communication lines will remain open here. I just need, you know, people to be patient and understanding and know where we're coming from. And please reach out if you have a concern, and we will address it as we can. There are things that we may not be able to address, but the idea here is to bring our kids back, to put smiles on their faces, to make them return to the time when, you know, everybody is longing to be in school and enjoys their time and learns beyond learning. And it's, this is a thankless position for us as educators, staff across the board, for students and for families, and for the world at this point. And, you know, the only way we get through this is working together. And I'll reiterate, thank you to all who participated, and that is, I have a terrific administrative team here. I got a great bunch of teachers. I have tremendous staff in this district, and I wouldn't want to do this anywhere else because of that. But it's also the families in this community that I've come to know over the past 10 years. I wouldn't want to work with any other group there either. You know, they demand a lot. They have, the rights demand a lot, but I think they have, they look at this as a true partnership, and they need to know that that is appreciated.
And that that's going to continue in, with the forums that you've set up with the-
Absolutely.
-teachers and the staff and the, and the families and the community.
And there may be questions that still have to be answered following those forums, and answers that come out after they, after certain things happen, that whatever level they happen, they will be communicated promptly.
I don't know if people that don't know you as well as maybe the people in this room and the administrators, you know, that know you, have worked with you closely. But we've saw through this process that suggestions, questions that came up from wherever they came from, the public, the staff, from us, you heard them and adjusted. There were times when you said, oh, that's, you know, that's a good point. I'm going to make this change, or we're going to add this into the plan, or, and we saw it happen. So I anticipate that that will continue.
No question. Nobody knows it all, despite the way they may present, when they're on a TV screen.
I knew where this is going.
We need to work together. And, listen, parents know their kids best. They know things that we don't from a school perspective and without, without the parent's perspective, without teachers' perspective, without the staff's perspective, without the community perspective, there's going to be a piece missing. So it's important that we take it all into account.
Okay, anybody else? Then I need a motion to adjourn.
Move to that.
That's Bill and Michelle for a second. All in favor? That's everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you, folks.
You're well, everybody.
Have a great night and stay healthy.